As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We'd like to go ahead and add a closed session to the end of the agenda for purchase of real property. Additionally, we'd like to add item nine A to eight A, resolution by governing body of recipient of directed projects grant, session law 2023-134. We'll also add eight A to eight B, the Clayton Raleigh Pump Station Capital Project Budget Ordinance, and then the closed session, as I mentioned.
All right. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Like? Son? Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Like? Son? Motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, is the Clayton for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here for Nathaniel Shelton tonight to present to you the next in an ongoing series of informational videos entitled Clayton for You. Tonight, we're going to be learning about our ETJ, information about this, as well as highlighting Conrad Almeida, our planning director in this video.
In this episode of Clayton for You, let's hear from our planning department as they break down everything you need to know about the extraterritorial jurisdiction, more commonly known as the ETJ.
Legally, an ETJ gives local governments the ability to enforce rules beyond their current town limits. The overall purpose of having an ETJ is to plan for the possible land use in the future. Since 2008, the town of Clayton has maintained a two-mile ETJ boundary. ETJs are common in North Carolina and exist in areas immediately adjacent to the town, depending on population. So, how does this impact you if you live in the ETJ? You are resident of Johnston County, meaning you pay Johnston County taxes. While you do not vote in municipal elections, you do have representation on every Clayton Advisory Board. All public zoning and inspections requests come through the town for approval. While the town enforces zoning, subdivision, and building code compliance in the ETJ, nuisance issues like junk cars, debris, and tall grass are enforced by Johnston County. Other services, such as law enforcement and animal control, are available through Johnston County. Wondering if you live in the ETJ? Check out our interactive map online.
Thanks for watching, and be sure to follow us on social media to keep up with Clayton for You and other town updates. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions or comments? Perfect. All right. Up next, under introduction and special presentation will be the swearing in of the fire marshal, Michael Tatum.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Michael Tatum as our new fire marshal. He brings 14 years of experience in fire code enforcement, planning, emergency management investigations, previously serving with the Pittsburgh Fire Department in Lee County, and for the past seven years with the Cary Fire Department. He's a graduate of Fayetteville Tech Community College, and will soon be graduating from Fayetteville State University with a Bachelor of Science in Emergency, excuse me, in Fire and Emergency Service Administration. He holds a list of certifications as a Level Three Fire Inspector, Level Two Fire Life Safety Educator, a certified fire and arson investigator, a firefighter, a fire officer, a fire instructor, and a FAA UAS drone pilot. Tonight, Mike was joined by his family, Heather, and their four children, Palmer, Georgia, Kate, Henry, and Griffin. And so I'll let Ms. Holland do the swearing in.
I'm Michael Tatum.
I'm Michael Tatum.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support, sorry, do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as fire marshal
My office as fire marshal.
For the town of Clayton.
For the town of Clayton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I'll sign this too. Thank you.
And then I have his badge. Someone let his wife pin his badge on.
Yes. So can we get your family to come up and get a photograph with you too? I'm sorry to be a director, but I really want y'all to have one. That's a great family right there. Congratulations. Welcome to Clayton. Up next on the agenda is the Farmers Market Week proclamation. Give the floor to Council Member Archer.
Thank you. Farmers Market Week is a national week to recognize farmers markets, and that takes place August 4th through 10th this year. So whereas farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthful, locally, and regionally produced foods through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the US economy. And whereas farmers markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the town of Clayton recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages, and more. Now therefore, to further awareness of farmers markets contributions, we, the Clayton Town Council, hereby proclaim the week of August 4th through 10th, 2024, as Farmers Market Week in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week. Proclaim this fifth day of August 2024.
Awesome. Let's have a nice round of applause for everybody at our farmers market. Appreciate them. All right. Up next, under old business, is resolution by governing body of recipient of direct project grant, session law 2023-134.
Good evening, Mayor, members of town council. Obviously Shannon's listed, but I'm covering the item for her tonight, presenting this item with my engineering director hat on. The following two items, both this one and the next capital project budget, are concurrent and related, so I'd like to brief you on both. And then if you approve of one, I ask you to approve of the capital budget ordinance associated with it as well. So session law 2023-134 included numerous direct appropriations from the state's drinking water and wastewater fund. The town of Clayton was a recipient of two of those. The first was approximately $6 million for several wastewater projects to abandon some pump stations and move flow towards the Clayton or Raleigh pump station that's currently in service, as well as that's the same location of the future Sam's Branch reclamation facility. And so moving some of that flow to the north to the current pump station to Raleigh, as well as where the flow will eventually be treated by Sam's Branch, opened up some capacity in the existing Little Creek reclamation facility. That open capacity did support some additional development in the ECI area, specifically the Nova Nordisk Agreement for capacity that you approved of last year. So that's the first $6 million. The second appropriation of the $14 million is for some other infrastructure projects. Staff will be back before you with approval and acceptance of that in a couple of months, but tonight is just for that first $6 million and the acceptance of it. In order to receive the funding, the governing body has to approve of the grant of the acceptance of it, including a resolution of support that we will abide by the terms and conditions that have been included in the offer letter. So with that, we would staff request that you approve of the acceptance of that first $6 million, as well as adoption of the resolution adhering to the requirements of the grant. If you so choose to approve that, we would also request that you approve of the budget ordinance to set up a capital project fund for the projects to be worked, to be paid out of, and the contracts and agreements to be encumbered from. So those two items are related. I'm happy to answer any questions on the grant acceptance, and Todd is here if there's any questions on the capital project budget ordinance. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Questions for staff? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2024-79. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2024-79. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Like? Son? Motion carries.
I'd like to make the motion, adopt ordinance 2024-0801. Measure resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-08-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Like? Son? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. Up next, staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mayor, a couple of quick comments this evening. First and foremost, I think everybody is aware of Hurricane Debbie and the potential for that to impact us here. I do believe the governor just recently, within the last hour or two, did declare a state of emergency for us here in North Carolina. As always, our staff are preparing for the worst, hoping for the best. We have a call tomorrow that Johnston County Emergency Management has put together for the entire county to kind of go through the preparations that they're making, and then staff are going to be having daily updates, possibly more if things do appear to be changing. But as of right now, we are monitoring it. We will provide additional details later in the week as to any potential for us standing up an emergency operations center or otherwise, but do know that we are prepared, preparing for that event. On a side note, I'd like to ask Patrick Pierce to come up for a moment to be recognized. As many of you have been informed recently here, Patrick has got a great opportunity to go work with the North Carolina Railroad and will be leaving us later this week. I just wanted to have Patrick come up and be recognized for a moment. He's our second economic development director, and really the first, though, is considered the economic development and government affairs director for the town of Clayton. A little over four and a half years career here, started out white knuckling it across the country at the literally beginning of COVID. He accepted it prior to a pandemic, traveled here in it, and was able to stand up his operation in the economic development department during some of the most uncertain times, and did it unbelievably well, and certainly has served the town of Clayton very well. And you'll be able to see many of the marks that he's left on this community, things like the social district that, you know, he's very passionate to get it done, and all the great work that we've done, that he's done with the Downtown Development Association, the Biome, the Life Sciences Project that we did as an economic development project. So, you know, many, many other accolades I could, I could mention here for Patrick, but I did just want to say thank you for your service to the town. We're fortunate that you will still be able to hopefully serve the town in other ways through partnerships with the North Carolina Railroad, but did want to just take a moment to say thank you for, for everything you've done. That's it.
Thank you so much, Rich, and really appreciate being able to work for you. You've been a fantastic leader, and it's been a true honor to be able to do this. Mayor and council, just thank you for the opportunity to be here. I can truly say it's been a fantastic four and a half years. It's been an interesting four and a half years. There's been a lot of things that we've done, a lot of issues that we have all tackled, and your leadership here continues to make this town great. I just can't thank you enough for this opportunity. I can say wholeheartedly that I'm a better economic developer now as a result of my experience here in Clayton, and without this, I don't think I'd be in a position to be able to go take this next opportunity. So I still plan to be here, raise my kids here, and be a part of Clayton. So I look forward to working with you and seeing all the great work that you all are doing from a different vantage point. So thank you so much. Really do appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate all your good work on behalf of the town of Clayton, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You good? Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? All right. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Yes.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, yesterday before you, I told you I had any feedback at every meeting. Unfortunately, God had different plans for me, a little family emergency, so I had to wait and tell you that my words were sincere. God had a different plan, as you know. I'll be here every time I can, and I just want to once again thank you all for the work that you do. I know it's selfish. Even if I disagree with you at times, I recognize the goodwill that is here, and so I want to thank you because I am a proud member of Clayton and glad to be here on this God-visit time on this earth. One last thing that I very personally want to offer, Mr. Mayor, I find you a major.
Thank you. Usually I'm the one with those kinds of comments, so it's kind of nice to, you know, I think to have it directed at me. Thank you. Yeah, we're glad you're here. Thank you very much. Thank you for those kind words.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Thompson, 227 West Blaine Street. First of all, I thank you for all the hard work and the local officials, and especially our town police for all their hard work. I'm proud of living Clayton. It was growing here. More often than not, I agree with you on most things, but tonight I come to you for something I don't appreciate. And I just wanted to let you know that we're off.
We're on now. So I just want to let you know that tonight, I come to you disappointed in the recent decision to utilize taxpayer dollars obtained by legislator Donna White to go towards our senior citizens, that you've chosen to use that for other purposes. I do understand that the original bill was written so that you couldn't use it because it was for property that you don't own, and I do understand that. And I feel like, once you got your technical correction done through the legislature, that you seem to have found a loophole to use that money for other means. I do understand that Representative White got you a million dollars, and it was originally, the spirit of the bill was to be used for senior center expansion. Furthermore, I do feel like the damage control that was done with the article in the Johnstonian was nothing more than putting lipstick on a pig. I think we're still dealing the senior citizens of this Clayton a pig. I've heard from four individuals who were at the meeting between council members and community and senior services members, and it upsets me that I was told that a council member had the nerve to stand up in the meeting and say, basically to paraphrase, "We're no longer doing anything for senior citizens, and we're a young and vibrant community." Man, that was kind of how it came across in the article in the newspaper, but, you know, I do understand that sentiment, that we are a young and vibrant community, but I think to verbalize to a room full of county officials and other officials that, you know, you're basically the responsibility is on their foot to take care of senior citizens and not on yours, I think is a little bit misdirected. It appears that you're trying to put the responsibility of senior citizens on the county. The reality is, you provide a lot of services that are not your responsibility. You provide a library. You have no obligation to do that. The county has one, but you do it because it improves the quality of life for the citizens in Clayton. You provide parks and recreation, and all these ball teams and all this community center. You have zero obligation to do that, but you do it because it improves the quality of life for the citizens of Clayton. You provide countless youth opportunities, from summer camps with the police department, from youth activities at parks and recreation, story hour at the library, you know, even have a youth librarian. And you do so because it improves the quality of life, even though you have zero obligation to provide anything for the youth of Johnston County. That's the county responsibility. So you use a lot of our taxpayer dollars anyway for things that you have no obligation to provide because it improves the quality of life of Clayton citizens. But for you to double down and say, "We're not providing for the senior citizens," when it could improve their quality of life, I think that's a slap in the face to the people that paved the way for you to sit in the seats that you're sitting in. I do understand that you can't pay for everything for everybody, but that money was obtained with the spirit that it would go towards senior citizens. And to say that you've got a million dollars, that you're decided, "We're not going to use it for them because now the way the technical correction's written, we can use it for a civic center." And I know what you want to do with your senior center, and I know where you want it. And I know there's no parking up there, and I know there's no handicap parking, and there's not even a facility that could be used by senior citizens. So I think it's a little bit misguided to say, "Well, we're going to do a senior center, and it's going to encompass everybody," when the reality is, you know, your other logic is, "Well, we provide parks, and that's for people of all ages." You do, but senior citizens can't swing from the monkey bars on the playground, but you're providing those for children at several parks in town. So if you're going to provide for the
First one is, I want to personally thank the town of Clayton, those who participated in the Gary Clark Back to School Event, and want to thank Dolores, and I want to thank Stephen personally. The event was a huge success for the first one. We did haircuts right here in the, right here in the hall, right here. We had it all laid out, kids are getting free haircuts, we handed out book bags, but it was a good joint thing between the town and the community. It was the first one. I think that we're going to be looking at a constant annual thing. And again, also want to thank the Clayton Fire Department, Clayton Police Department, they set up also, had a good turnout as far as kids going out there to the fire engines and enjoying, so again, good, good, good community event. And thank you, guys. Second, I just want to address a little bit about the senior thing, whatever. I appreciate the citizens that we have to come up and speak on things that they feel that they know, but being a personal one at the meeting myself, and I will stand flatfooted in front of any four individuals that said whatever, those words were never spoken. Those words were never spoken. Being a forerunner for the senior center, I can personally say there has been no allocations towards the funds. My integrity and the things that I say are extremely important to me personally, so whatever individuals might think, whatever they might say, I have no problems in standing in front of them and saying that is a flat-out lie. With no allocations being made and things that people write, whether it be in the papers and things like that, I say this all the time, and we can go back and look at YouTube videos, I always find it really funny that people have a tendency to avoid me. I know why, but at the end of the day, they want to get their comments from other individuals who like to kind of stir the pot. I don't like to stir the pot. I only believe in things that are factual, and I'll say this to those out there in the stream world, I'll say this to those here in here, if you want to get factual, then you come to me. If you want to go out and we want to get things based upon how people feel and what people think, then kind of stay out there. But at the end of the day, there has been no decisions with any amount of money that's been given for a senior center. It's funny, too, because at the end of the day, and I appreciate, again, the comments that were made, but there was nothing at all, especially when people who have been on council for numerous years, when the senior center was in this disarray, until I came on as senior senior, and by no means I don't want any kind of praise or any pat on the back, but until I came on there, that thing wasn't even looked at. Now, all of a sudden, we got all this concern for the senior center. Had that same passion in finding out what the exact reasons for whatever took place, took place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Casey?
I want to appreciate citizens' comments, want to reiterate what Councilman Sim says. I mean, there's, as far as I know, there's no decision that's been made on, on that money. You know, I've been to the senior center multiple times, I've volunteered, I've carried food over there, I know them, I know several of them personally now, and, you know, I think there's varying degrees. If we can do something, we want to do something. I don't think there's no argument there. Do we, can we, do we have consensus on exactly what that is? Probably not. At some point, we're going to have to figure it out, though. You know, so, I mean, there is, there is some money out there, but, you know, that money will not achieve what I think the ultimate goals are of what they would like to have anyway. So, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of unknowns. I guess that's my point. There's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of uncertainty, and, you know, it's going to take a village, it's not just going to take the taxpayers of the town of Clayton to be able to do that. So I just hope and pray that, you know, we'll, we'll figure this out, and, you know, some, some opportunity will come along, and everybody will be happy. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else? You can. Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to mention that we were so grateful to have a visit from Governor Cooper, who came by to talk about all the achievements that we've made out at the wastewater treatment plant for Clayton. Unbelievable undertaking for the town and for have that, to be able to have that recognized on the state and national platform was just amazing. And so I wanted to also thank staff, a lot of behind-the-scenes efforts took place to pull that off, and there's several of you that I could name specifically, but thank you so much. It looked awesome. The officials that came along with the governor, and then the secretary of DEQ, they were all just really impressed, and it was just a really cool thing to see. I was honored to be a part of it, so thanks to everybody.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You get 48 hours notice that the governor's coming, and, you know, it's kind of like finding out that you've got company coming to your house, and we need to clean it really quick, and we need to get it to where we can host, you know, the, the head elected official for the state of North Carolina. And to our staff and everybody who did tremendous work in 48 hours, we cannot, again, thank you enough for all the hard work and making Clayton look really great, you know, and which is what you guys do on a daily basis, so we appreciate that. I want to address one thing with Michael first, to move, for this event that took place this past weekend, one, the bouncy house needs to stay there longer, and two, so does the fire truck. I had two nephews, ages like five and seven, who were selling lemonade in front of the Crowing Inn on Saturday morning, right? And we should all be selling lemonade at the Crowing Inn on Saturday morning because they, they did really well. But they left right after that gig to go see the fire truck and get in the bouncy houses, and they were already gone. Yes, so it was a great event, was well attended, is highly regarded, but we need more of the fire trucks staying out there longer and the bouncy house being in place. Gotcha. When it comes to the senior center, I was sitting in that meeting, and I don't recall any of that type of conversation taking place. What I do recall clearly was, the number one thing that landed for me was the fact that they were turning senior citizens away at that senior center because they didn't have enough room there for people to participate. And for me, like, it's, it's tough enough to have a playground that is so full that you have to turn children away, but when you have to turn senior citizens away for activities because your space is not large enough, is a disgrace, in my opinion. So during that meeting, you know, I expressed that, and I'm like, and we have this entire facility here at the Clayton Center that has tremendous parking, that has handicap, that is super easy to get in and get out of, you know, I don't want to see anyone turned away from participation because the facility that you have is too small. And when it comes to, you know, being able to support the endeavors of that, if some of our park and recreation crew needs to go and help you set up tables, or if they need to come in and rearrange tables from activity to lunchtime or whatever, we would make that service available at no charge to that group because we want to partner with them, obviously. So, you know, then we had some discussion about a property that is between here and the current center that is on the market, and the conversation came up that, you know, we deserve a brand-new facility. We don't want makeshift. Well, that makeshift has a 1.5 or $2 million price tag as compared to a brand-new facility, which is going to have a minimum of $2 million, if you can even build the foundation and get the steel brought in for that kind of money. So I was a little bit discouraged with that aspect of it, that, you know, I understand they would love to have a brand-new facility. I also understand that, you know, Johnston County is sitting on the largest reserve that they've had in the history of Johnston County, over $250 million in reserve. So, town of Clayton doesn't have that kind of money in reserve, but we still want to do our part. I still think it's sad that people, senior citizens specifically, are turned away from activity time because of lack of space. So I understand their frustration, I think they understand a little bit of our frustration, but it's unfortunate that we're not at the point yet where we have figured out what that is, but without question, that's on the radar. Because let's face it, the older we get, the sooner we're all going to be seniors. And Jason Thompson, you and I both born and bred and grew up in Clayton, North Carolina, and if the Lord is willing, we are going to become senior center, senior citizens, and we're going to want to have a place to go and be active and play. And so that's still going to be a goal for the town of Clayton. But I just thought that part of it was important to add, that, you know, I don't recall anyone saying that we're not doing anything for seniors in Clayton. I think that would be absurd. But, you know, more importantly, I want to figure out a way to, to help in the meantime between when, between now and when we can get this figured out and, and have something specifically for the seniors, right? And I understand that all the statistics and the demographics say that we are an incredibly young community, average age 32, right? But I also know that we're going to all end up being senior citizens one day, and we need to have a program that is reflective of what Clayton is all about, and we will continue to work towards that.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get on a bandwagon, but I'm a little bit passionate about everybody having a space to be able to play. I don't care if you're eight or 80.
All right. Anything else? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purchasing of real property in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.[1291.83]
And we will continue to work towards that. All right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get on a bandwagon, but I'm a little bit passionate about everybody having a space to be able to play. I don't care if you're eight or 80. All right. Anything else? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purchasing of real property in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11.
Motion seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, is there any other business to come before this council? If not, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.